Right.
Like, how do I, how do I put that in? How do I put the rest? Because it's not our deal. And I want to talk to Dave and just say, you know, what can I say from, yeah, I've had.
You really have to work with the developer on it, and I'm sorry that this is happening, you know?
It sucks, but.
Yeah, and I assume.
There is.
There's.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Munster Town Council regular meeting for July fifteenth to order here at the Munster Town Hall. Call the roll, please.
Councillor Shinkin.
Here.
Councillor Hopper.
Here.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
Councillor Peterson.
Here.
Councillor Nellis.
Present. With that, I'd like to ask you to please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start off with a proclamation for the National Night Out Against Crime, and Councillor Hoff- Hopper will read it for us.
Proclamation of the Munster Town Council, National Night Out Against Crime, submitted by Officer James Greyst of the Munster Police Department. Whereas the Munster Police Department and Choice Community Council of Munster are sponsoring a unique drug and violence prevention program on August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, entitled the National Night Out Against Crime Celebration. And whereas Munster's twenty-ninth Annual National Night Out Against Crime Celebration provides a unique opportunity for Munster, Munster's residents, businesses, schools, and community organizations to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Munster be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in Munster. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood, neighborhood safety, awareness, and co-op- cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out Program. Now, therefore, we, the Munster Town Council, do hereby call upon all citizens of Munster to join the Munster Police Department, Choice Community Council of Munster, Munster's businesses, schools, and community service organizations, and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting Munster's twenty-ninth Annual National Night Out Against Crime Celebration on August sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Further, let it be resolved that we, the Munster Town Council, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, as the National Night Out Against Crime Celebration in Munster, Indiana.
Thank you very much, councillor.
Sure.
Take some photos with the proclamation.
Absolutely.
I would make a motion to adopt the proclamation of for National Night Out Against Crime. I'll second it.
All votes in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign? All right.
And then we're inviting Officer Greyst up here to.
Yeah. If you'd like to take, if you'd like to sign this real quick, you can. There are members from. Right, Officer Greyst, there's some people that would like to have. You're welcome.
If anybody needs a volunteer that's here, you're welcome to come up. Uh, just helping out the night out that night.
Choice and National Crime Watch.
All right.
Where you go.
You want Joe in the picture since he read the proclamation?
Sure.
I wonder if it's better.
I mean, yeah, let's go down.
Let's go down there and show them.
It's not the way. Officer Greyst, did you just take all those papers with you?
Sorry.
I'm just even at the top one. Okay, you're last.
All righty. This leads us into our open to the public. And all public comment is limited to two minutes with a total of twenty minutes allotted for the public comment section. All speakers must sign in. Must sign the public speaker's sign-in form. Prior to speaking, please keep all comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. At their discretion, the council may allow public comment to extend beyond twenty minutes, but it is not required to do so. All rules for the public comment are posted outside the main meeting room. So this is, we're starting a little bit different since the state of Indiana has set down rules as to how the public comment is set up. I did notice tonight that there were some folks that have already signed in on the podium. I'd like to invite them to come up first, and then those that, in addition, that would like to speak, then fill in behind them. So who's ever got their names on the sheets, please come forward. And if you didn't say your name and address for the record, we appreciate that.
I am Kristen Curtin. I live at ten forty-five Zelia. I am speaking on behalf of those here and couldn't be present on the removal of the chicanes. If you are here supporting this cause, can you please raise your hands? The residents of Azalia would like to thank the councilmen for your support and agreement on the negatives of the chicanes. Thank you to Mr. Peterson, who took much of his personal time in assisting and communicating with us. We as a group were prepared to come here this evening with multiple speakers on various points we wanted to convey. We are prepared. I was going to even make you packets. After much positive news from various sources in the last twenty-four hours, we are all in agreement of not sharing what would have been more negatives and more complaints, along with a petition with more over than a hundred and sixty signatures that were easy to get, and one hundred percent of the residents who signed shared the same common feelings. We share the gratefulness for the speedhogs. Thank you. Much needed. And we share the pure confusion over the giant cement slabs we all learned are called chicanes. Wanted to point out that there are forty-eight homes from Columbia to Southwood. We are the most affected daily. We collected forty-four of forty-eight signatures saying yes for removal. Three homes were unavailable at each attempt, and one home wasn't asked to participate. That leaves us at ninety-two percent of residents on these two blocks of Azalia are a hundred percent in favor. And if trends and statistics are accurate, it would have been ninety-eight percent in favor. As we move forward with this issue with hopes that the rumors are correct, I'll keep my packets just in case. And thank you again for making Azalia safer and removing the headache of the chicanes in the very near future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one thirteen Beverly Place. I'm here to, on behalf of myself and some of my other teammates over here, for the beautification of the parkway. Like to provide an update. We met with a couple of you. We've also met with our own committee uh, here last Thursday at Conference of May. We got together to organize ourselves around the door-to-door campaign we're running to collect the surveys that were distributed by the town. Thank you very much. So we're in the process of getting all this back. I talked with Fred and, um, Didier before here, and it looks like we're making good progress there. I got a few more to get tomorrow. And, uh, we're gonna take it from there. I did talk to, uh, John Rubble, the, uh, so, the, uh, landscape architect. He's going to be out, I think he told me Wednesday, so I'm gonna try and meet him out at onsite. Uh, if not, we're gonna get, we're pushing to get an earlier date. He's saying end of July, early August. Uh, we hope to get that a little quicker than that, so I'm gonna try and, you know, every week, give them a call. We agreed to have status calls once a week to get that moving along with, uh, our, our public works. So again, just an update. We also support Azalia and the chicanes effort. Thank you for that. And thank you for your support to our committee. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
Evening, um, direction eighteen thirty-nine Magnolia. Great.
All righty.
Eighteen thirty-nine Magnolia, Tom, you're rich. About seeing me, I'm here again to say no to Ridge Road. Um, you guys voted in, ran on North Ridge Road, you guys are working on plan and program to use uh, beautification or imagine with all the links. Thank you for that. However, there's a group that's persistently asking you to do something different in spite of your statements of which way you're going, which direction you're going. Um, I wasn't at the meeting last week, but I did watch it, and, and I saw something that bothered me just a little bit. Um, in this group, it, it's spearheaded by spokesman by Mitch Barloga. Mr. Barloga works for the Northwest Indiana Regional Planning Commission. I know that because of the previous meeting, he stated that publicly here in front of the council, and I have one here. Um, they are a publicly federally funded group, and from their website, it's the official council of Northwest Indiana governments that brings communities together to address areas of regional concern. Apparently, this is a regional concern. Um, what bothered me last week is that they're going to hold a public forum. You requested the council be there, had questions. Is this not a public forum? Are you not in control of this project? Number two, is NRPC, are they holding a meeting on their own on this issue? Is Mr. Barloga acting as a agency representative for that group? Is he using his position in that group to exert influence on what you guys are doing here? Are there any benefits to that agency if Munster implements a land reduction project? Finally, is it ethical for an employee of a regional government planning agency to organize and push a project that a local government has consistently stated will not be implemented? I work for government. I know there are ethics that you are bound to. I'm concerned that, um, there may be some, some concern about ethics and propriety in this situation, and I hope that you guys take control of this and put this to bed right away.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to, um, ask that comments directed to the council, I think, are very appropriate. I would caution comments directed to other residents should be should be a little more careful. Uh, again, it is public input. People are open to speak what they want, and, and comments directed to the council, I certainly agree with. But I do think we need to be cautious with comments directed to other residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julia Rack, and I live at ninety-five forty-two Greenwood Avenue in Munster. I am here to request a crosswalk at the Franlin-Greenwood intersection or the Franlin-Elwood intersection. As the construction is currently underway on Franlin, I wanted to follow up on this. Perhaps what I am suggesting is already in the works. I walk and bike with my young children to and from Frank Hammond School every day during the school year. We cross Franlin along with twenty, twenty-two, excuse me, twenty to thirty other students where there is no crosswalk. Many crossing at Greenwood and or Elmwood come from the Fair Meadows subdivision streets of Camelia, Walnut, Greenwood, Dogwood, Azalia, Miracle, and Elmwood, directly south of Franlin. While Franlin has many crosswalks, our closest crosswalks to get to school would be at Wyeth Oak or Southwood, which is out of the way for this neighborhood if they enter Frank Hammond's required school door B. Throughout the school year, there have been some close calls where students cross in the middle of Franlin. Other times, car drivers and school bus drivers stop to let groups of children properly, safely cross. While a crosswalk does not mean children can carelessly cross, it would make drivers more aware that many children and parents cross here. So thank you very much for your time, and I look forward to your response, please.
Mr. President. So Julia, we are working with the school town of Munster right now, and, um, we're working with each individual school, um, principal, and they're gonna come out with their, um, their recommendations and list of priorities of where they would like to see them. So I would mention that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You ready?
I, I think I, I am. I.
Okay.
But we're waiting. You can say your name and your address, and then I can.
Absolutely. Uh, Scott Mason, eight six three nine Holman Avenue. Um, I just want to commend each and every one of you. You guys are doing a great job listening to people, the bio swell, the chicanes, and a whole bunch of other things. That's really, really awesome. But what comes with the bio swell and the chicanes and a whole bunch of other things is you guys need to start looking internally. I realize that it's previous administrations that, that did a lot of these things, but this is becoming a death by a thousand paper cuts. Pay for something, then pay to fix it, and so on and so forth. You know, department heads need to be answering questions about why does this keep happening and how do we prevent this going in the future? Um, each and every one of you, I mean, the, the answers could be, we don't know yet, but we're looking into it. That's always fair. But this money that is being spent to fix this since the past needs to stop. That's it. Thanks. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ned Letterver. I live at one eighty-four oh three Maple Street in Lansing. Uh, about five hundred feet from the, I understand now it's called the chicane. I didn't know what, it's a, it's a barrier to me. I've gotta tell you, since that thing went up, my neighborhood is quieter, it's safer. In the six months prior to the time that that barricade went up, I had three accidents in the, I live on the circle, the, the first roundabout. I live right there. And there's been three accidents there. Once they, they knocked down the keep right sign, and there were various pieces of this, the guy's car laying there at two o'clock in the morning to happen. And one of them was the license plate, which thrilled me. I was able to get it to the police. But, uh, a month later, somebody comes flying through. I've got big pots of flowers there. They hit those, knocked us out. Um, they come flying through there day and night at forty, fifty miles an hour. I am not exaggerating. They hit that last stop sign in Munster. I don't know what the name of the street is. But they come up on that, and they take off, and it's just pedal to the metal. And they're not stopping for that stop sign in front of my house. I've called the Lansing Police numerous times. They're very tired of hearing about me. I'm, I came, I came here hoping I would see a few ones that would bring it up, but, uh, I see there's people that are dead set against this. From a safety perspective, I think it's very important. It's not just important for the Lansing side. I've talked to people on these, uh, Munster site on terrace, and they wish it would stay up because they see the cars come flying down. As the biggest rocks come.
Excuse me. Mr. President, are we talking about the closure on the terrace? Okay, so that's not a share. That's a, those are Jersey barriers that are, that have closed the terrace.
You don't want to know. Absolutely. There are your laps. You don't want to know.
Yeah, the chicanes are very diverse. That's a barrier.
I think if you talk to the people on terrace, they approach me. I read my Bible. And we're talking about, and they are all for it.
Thank you.
Sign in. Oh, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I did that. Thank you.
My name is Kurt Middleberger. Uh, I live on Forest Avenue. That's the street that he described that comes to the last street from Munster.
And your, your house address?
Eight four four six.
Thank you.
Four seventy. Um, I'm talking about the road closure in terrace, okay, and I've talked to several of my neighbors, people who live down the street, people with children, and there's every single one for it. And like the gentleman before said, I live here since twenty-ten. Uh, I know of two car accidents where people late at night drove into parked cars speeding. I've seen several cars speeding almost daily. If I get to see any license plates, I would say nine out of ten is an Illinois license plate, okay? They have nothing to do on Forest Avenue besides just cutting through in high speed. So I would be very happy if this would be closed forever. I think it would make the street safer. Uh, when we moved in, my wife and I were pretty much the only couple with young children there. The rest of the people in our street were like elderly people, but now there's a lot more young families that moved into that neighborhood down the street on Forest at the park where children are playing all the time. And I'm talking about little kids who run in front of the street, you know, they don't look right in there. Those are little kids, right? And if you have people driving through that street forty-five, fifty miles an hour, I don't know, this, this just, it's a kill that's gonna happen. It's just a matter of time before one of those guys hits a child. So I would be asking for you guys, do whatever you can to keep it closed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mitch Barloga, nineteen hundred Bluebird Lane. The one who was just mentioned several times over by the gentleman who just left. Unfortunately, I didn't come here to talk about what I need to now, but I'm gonna bring it up now because I have been outing a public forum, and my corporation has as well. I need to let it know to everybody in this room that where I work is Northwestern Indiana Regional Planning Commission. It's zero to do with my advocacy of the Ridge Road Project. The Ridge Road Project stands alone as a superior project for this community and the benefit of downtown. I recently moved to Munster in October. I am a resident of Munster. I have First Amendment rights to stand here and to talk about what I believe. To have another individual come in here to say that there's a various connection between my government organization and my First Amendment rights as a citizen to advocate is ridiculous, and I wonder who puts up to this? Who is making it look like I am doing this on part of NERC? I get zero, it's not even a NERC project. It has nothing to do with NERC. NERC funds fifty million dollars a project per year. This isn't one of them. I do this because I recently moved to Munster, and I began to advocate for this because I believe in. I used to live in Crown Point and Dyer. I wouldn't be here if I was in Crown Point or Dyer. And now I am a resident of this community, and I have more than a few residents with me who support it. So I hope there's no more connection between me and where I work. And I hope you understand that I am here as a citizen to try to defend this project and try to make sure that we do the right thing in spending that money for the benefit and the safety of our citizens. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for all the comments tonight. Uh, that does conclude the open to the public session.
Were you letting anybody else talk instead of, if they didn't sign in, I didn't let anyone do the talk?
Well.
I'll make it quick.
Sarah, I'll let you come up and.
Thank you.
That, you'll be the last speaker.
Hi.
And please do sign in too.
You gotta sign in, please.
Sign in.
Bruce Carusel. Eighty-five sixty Forest Avenue. And like the rest of, well, several other people talked about the road closure. I've been a resident over there thirty-three years now, and when I first moved in, it was closed. When they opened that up, it opened up the floodgates. Since you guys closed it down, it reduced the traffic by two-thirds. I'm highly in favor of it. I appreciate you guys doing it. I would like this, I'd like it to stay permanently. Secondly, I'm opposed to the chicanes, chicanies, whatever you call them. For one, because there's one slate of the road in front of my house with the master plan after you guys just did the, uh, the repaving of it. And just for all the same reasons that the people of Azalia are opposing them is the same. And one of the other reasons is because it reduces the enjoyment peaceful of my home, which I own a boat, and I need a wide berth to back my boat up. And if you put a concrete obstruction in there, I can no longer do that. So once again, I want to thank you for closing down terrace. Hope you keep it closed. And, um, please don't put no more chicanes in. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, well, this will be, again, this will be our last speaker, please.
Yes, sorry. Uh, Christine Lo, forty-six, Center Drive. Um, I'm here also talking about the closure of terrace. Um, it's been a positive impact in the neighborhood. Even though I don't live directly on terrace or in Forest, I live more in Timmerick. You can definitely see the reduction of cars coming through, uh, Forest Avenue, and as the gentleman said, there are, um, you know, a park there. There's a lot more young families coming in, so we're seeing a lot more kids. And so I think keeping it closed would be a positive effect on the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then, Kate, we've got a clerk treasure has some statistics for us.
I have the recap from our electronic public comments for the last two weeks. We had forty-four that expressed, these are forty-four individual emails that expressed opposition to Ridge Road. We had twenty-five that expressed support of the Ridge Road project. We had one email that said, please improve Beverly Parkway. We had one that requested the Ridge Road, um, documents returned online with updates. We had one no to the town and the, um, Center for Visual and Performing Arts. We had one no to future ch- chicanes. We had one yes that the chicanes are working, and we had two. Mistook wordage there. We have three that said no chicanes. It's just the way they came across. Um, one person loved the crosswalks at Franlin and Oreo, and then one person said, remove the crosswalk at Oreo. I had, um, one person that said, please open terrace up, and then two emails that said, please close terrace. That is my recap of the electronic public comments.
Thank you very much. I did want to make a comment that I have asked the Chief of Police Steve Sheckel to, uh, make arrangements to go out with the VIPs and officer, and the VIPs to pull the, uh, terrace neighborhood down, uh, Forest and, uh, Moraine and Holman to, to get the actual comments from the resident. So they will be out here in the next few days into probably next week. So with that, I'd like to move us into, uh, the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further, uh, comments, questions?
I just have one comment. Uh, in last month's, uh, minutes, there was an email that was directed at Resolution nineteen fifty-eight about the improper use of bike paths, e-bikes, electronic scooters, and minibikes. I'm just wondering if we had any kind of response, um, for, for following up with that kind of question. Uh, I, I would, I guess, clerk treasure, Miss, you would probably receive that. Have we had any follow-up with that, or?
I did. I followed up with attorney, uh, Nicole Bennett, who drafted these, and then I followed up with the resident. Um, but the answer is that on both bike lanes and bike paths, that e-bikes and electronic scooters, as well as electronic, uh, mobility devices, they're allowed.
Okay, thank you. I, again, it is gonna become a bigger and bigger question, I think, as e-bikes become more popular. I think it was a good question. Thank you for following up and, uh, talking with our attorneys.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
And thank you to Ms. Bennett for her help and responsiveness.
All right, council, any other questions, comments? Seeing them, would you please call the roll?
Councillor Shinkin.
Yes.
Councillor Hopper.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Peterson.
Yes.
Councillor Nellis.
Yes. We have no, uh, old business tonight. It takes us into new business. First one is a, A, is an engagement letter with Baker Tilly.
Well, this is to do an executive search to find a new town manager for the town. Um, they have looked at three different firms. We felt that Baby Tilly was the best. They offered the best, uh, product in terms of how they would go about the search and working with council, uh, and other stakeholders.
All right. Do we have support for this?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the letter of engagement from Baker Tilly dated February second, two thousand twenty-four to perform an executive search for the next town manager that costs not to exceed twenty thousand six hundred dollars.
I second that.
We have a motion. We have support. Any further questions, comments?
I, again, I, I think this is a good, good thing that we do. I think it's gonna help us as a council to kind of, uh, collaborate with Baker Tilly to formalize a, a, a good, uh, plan. I also am excited that, that this does include a web-based community survey, so we can, um, survey the residents in town for their feedback also. survey the residents in town for their feedback also. So I'm glad that that's included into this, this proposal.
Very good. Seeing none, no others. Uh, please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Item B is Resolution twenty-one thirty-five, extension of the interim town manager. Uh, agreement.
And, and that's essentially what this is. It will extend that agreement, which is scheduled to end at the beginning of August. This will carry it through the end of the search for the new town manager. Terms are very similar to what they were before, uh, with an acknowledgement that, uh, because I'm serving two roles, that I'm gonna have to start focusing more on the controller side of things for the budget.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-one thirty-five as adopted, as presented.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Further comments?
I'd like to, I'd like to thank Tricia Abbott for being a superstar. That's what I, that's my comment.
Yes. I would agree with that. I would also, um, call attention to, uh, section four, item C. I would ask possibly, you know, Council President, uh, Nellens, if you could give us at least an overview of who, you know, again, our interim town manager is the employee responsible and charged in doing reports for some of these larger projects. But with the Nick D. Westlake train extension, the development in Saxon and Centennial Village, the bridges over ditches, the raised grant. Are you able to give us a, uh, an update on who's the staff person that's responsible for those projects and attending monthly meetings and things like that? Again, it doesn't have to be done now. I, I just, within the next week, if you could give us that type of, uh, information, I think that would help us.
Those, uh, Counselor Gardner, we will do our best. Uh, again, some of those items, we just aren't getting to. And they're all important, so we will, we will get that, uh, list to you and again, I wanna assure you that as we've talked, interim, uh, town manager, Trish Abbott has done an outstanding job, but she's pulling down two things and.
Yeah, and we did talk about this at our agenda meeting as well. I, I would, I, 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 I second the motion, or second the idea that Trish is doing a fantastic job. I think what I'm concerned with is the Westlake's train extension, the development Saxon and Centennial Village. Uh, the bridges over ditches, which is now we have the final plan. Uh, uh, again, if it's a staff person or if it's a council person, I think it's important that we know what's going on with these projects.
Agreed. Any other comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Takes us up to Resolution twenty-one thirty-six.
Twenty-one thirty-six is related to CDBG Community Development Block Grant. This is a program of funding that comes from the federal government that is administered through the county. Uh, and we're being asked to adopt the resolution that basically says that the town wants to participate in the next round of funding, the next three fiscal years of funding. This is not choosing a product, uh, project. It's not awarding and it's just letting the county know, yes, Munster wants to participate in the next round.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-one thirty-six. The CDBG renewal and agreement. I think this is a very important pro- program as part of our continuing efforts. Ensure that our roads are restored to the reasonable expectations of the community. I think the condition of the roads, um, is not where the community would like them to be, and I think this is gonna be part of this process. And I further hope when we are, uh, planning our budget for next year, council is able to devote additional monies dealing with things like potholes around town. So I am pleased to motion this and I urge the council to adopt Resolution twenty-one thirty-six.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Uh, any more comments?
I guess I just want to clarify that the motion should also say authorize the council president to execute the agreement.
The agreement, there's an agreement that goes along with that.
Oh, amend the motion.
And again, I'd like to comment that with this, uh, agreement. Over the years, we have received substantial amount of money to, on projects and.
CDBG is, uh, we get the, we, we get funding every other year and, and it's been used in the last several cycles to be doing the alleys. It used to be used a lot in Independence Park. It's based on census tracts where we can use the money, so sort of restricted in that way. But that's what's been used historically. And again, council will be asked at a future date to identify an actual project where it will be.
Very good. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Okay, upon approval, all five counselors will have to sign this. So we send it out, okay? Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
There's, there's three copies that need to be signed, so thank you.
All right, then we have a change order on project?
Change order for, in fact, this year's funding of CDBG alley paving. So earlier this year, council awarded a contract with site services for it. Um, when they went out and did the work, there was additional concrete aprons that they put in. They made a little bit pictures of the garbage trucks could so the road could tolerate the garbage trucks. So the change order is for eleven thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and fifteen cents. Um, and, and most of that is going to be covered by our CDBG allocations.
Do we have support for this?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to approve the change order in the amount of eleven thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and fifteen cents for a new total cost of the alley repaving of one hundred seven thousand seven hundred sixty-two fifteen. And approve pay app number one to site services in the amount of eighty-six thousand six eighty-eight ninety with Munster paying a total of seven thousand seven hundred sixty-two fifteen cents.
I second that.
We have a motion. We have support. Any further comments? Again, it's, it's money that comes that we can use for projects and there, there's always a, a opportunity that we can utilize that, so. Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. That takes us up to, uh, change order. Twenty-one dash three, traffic calming.
And this is for Community Crossings National Grant Project that's been going on. Um, there was some work done on treadways. Where the, the residents wanted some traffic calming near the park that goes there. So there was some additional work that happened with that, as well as an extension of the bike path that runs along that area.
We have support?
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the amendment for S E H additional costs incurred for the C C M G twenty, twenty-three dash one project totaling fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
I second that.
We have a motion. We have a second. Further discussion, comments?
Mr. President, I will, I'm going to return to a subject that we discussed at the last council meeting, which is my deep concern over, um, how these devices are installed. I have learned from, you know, the council and researching this matter, that traffic calming is a euphemism in the installation of road barriers. And there's different kinds of road barriers. There are the chicanes that are widely unpopular. There are these raised crosswalks. And, um, there are other devices. And at the end of the day, all of these devices are designed to impact vehicles. Um, they're ostensibly there to slow them down. But the, but the reality is, is that they present a hazard in the roadway for vehicles. And if they are hit in a particular way or a particular speed, there can be injuries or damage. Right now, as we learned recently, the town of Munster is subject to litigation. In, um, various litigation. One of those cases that I was reviewing, a let, and it's a tragic case and I don't want to minimize the claims of the, of the litigants, uh, but the town of Munster was named in a way. And the allegation against the town was that a road that I believe has been in existence for a hundred years, possibly, was negligently designed. This raises a serious concern. We are talking about installing these road obstacles, uh, for the purpose of trying to slow down traffic. But there is seems to be no metrics, no methodology, no evidence that we can point to to say, to explain why we are doing these things. This is deeply troubling. We already have experienced attorneys going out complaining that what we're doing, uh, is negligent. And if we don't have metrics to justify what we are doing with these installations, whatever they are, regardless of the noble purpose that we're putting out there, we are potentially exposing the town to liability. And we most recently talked about, um, developing these metrics. And we talked about having the different chiefs, the fire chief and the police chief and the chief of public works involved. And I would, uh, at, at the last agenda review, we saw an algorithm that had been preliminary, preliminarily developed to help develop these metrics. I am very strongly concerned that we are installing devices in the roadway that are, that are effectively road obstacles. And we don't have a rational justification for this. Until we develop these metrics, until we develop this methodology, I think we need to suspend these installations. We can certainly come back and revisit this, but the goal here is public safety. And a knee-jerk reaction of installing obstacles in the roadway ignores other alternatives such as enhanced police patrols, such as installing stop signs. And without scientific evidence, without something that the town can point to to say, this is why we did it, we are putting ourselves in legal jeopardy. I strongly urge that we do not move forward with this. Instead, we alter, instead, we suspend these installations subject to the development of these metrics. So I'm gonna instead move that we table this for the time being. Develop those metrics and we can certainly come back and revisit this at a later time.
I, I'd like to point out, this work has already been done.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify, this is for engineering work that has already happened. This is not, it's, this is not the installation. This is work that has been done by our engineers.
Uh, uh, well, I reiterate this. Again, I've asked, why have we done this? Do we have an answer? We don't.
Yeah, but I, I, and I just want council to be aware, this is a change order for engineering work that has been completed. So I, I just want to be clear that that it's not, uh, you're not voting to put anything in, remove anything. The work, the engineering work has been done, the communication with residents, a lot of this is communicating with residents throughout the, the project.
Okay, I, I'm gonna withdraw that motion to table. I, that was a misunderstanding on my part, but again, my points, I believe, are valid. We need to develop these metrics before we move forward with any of these road obstacle installations that go under this name of traffic calming.
And yes, Counselor Peterson, we, we have put a hold on those items. And we are gonna be working, we will be working on this matrix and get it finalized.
Yeah, we spoke about that. I, I think for, for clarification, I'd like to read the, the information that was presented to us by S E H. Uh, subsequent to the executing the original contract, the town expanded the scope of work to improve to include improvements at the intersection of Franlin Parkway and Oreo Drive and the installation of a bike path along Treadler. So that's what, uh, the majority of this, uh, dollar cost is for. Mr. President, I call for a question. Call for vote.
Call for the vote. All right, uh.
All right, Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. All right, that takes us up to, uh, item F. Which is change order twenty-twenty-four paving and water main. Work.
So there's a lot of work being done, uh, for water main and paving along Franlin and in that area. Um, and when the contractor was out there, uh, they came across a fiber line that was not marked. Uh, and it's requiring, uh, some hydroexcavating. It's requiring some curb work to get this done. Um, and there's a tiny issue with this in order to complete it. Uh, the change order has already been signed. Uh, and we're asking for confirmation on this, but this is something that was within my signing authority. We wanted to keep the project moving. So you're aware, another one came across my desk since this. Too late to get onto the meeting, but you will be asked to confirm it later. And I somewhat anticipate that there will, this entire area where those water main work is being done is an area that has been a lot of problems over the years, which was why it was identified to do a huge project on this year. So I, I guess my message is, this is the first, but not the last, there are change orders that we're expecting to come up.
Mr. President, I would, um, make a motion to confirm the change order from Reese Riley Construction Incorporated in the amount of twenty-seven thousand three hundred dollars to hydroexcavate along Franlin Parkway for a new total job cost of five million two hundred and twenty-four hundred and three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and thirty-three cents.
I'll second that.
We have a motion. We have a second.
I, I guess at this time, I would also, again, this is a large project that's going on in the Paramount subdivision. I would, uh, there's a number of people here in that, that live in that area. Uh, we do appreciate your patience through this project. Uh, this is trying to move as fast as it can, but again, unfortunately, when we do things underground, we never know exactly what's underground. So, uh, part of this, I think, on behalf of the council, I think we all like to, uh, thank the residents in that area and we also realize how Franlin connects the whole town together sometimes and everybody throughout Munster has been affected by this and we do appreciate the patience that, that the residents have, uh, endured over the last couple of weeks. And probably for the next, uh, few weeks also, that'll come up.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Okay, we have another change order. This is that Riverbend Water Tank.
Uh, council awarded a bid to put, uh, a new fencing around the water tank and after the award was given, staff members are out there working with the company. They found that it would be beneficial to add in some key pads, a gate, a, along the gate and that's what it that's what this change order is about. It's additional work that staff requested.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the additional items totaling twenty-six hundred dollars to Oak Ridge Fence and Gate for a new invoice total of eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
I second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments? Please call the roll.
Counselor Schinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Item H is a contract award.
This is for the next round of C C M G work, um, which includes Highland Place Meadow Lane, uh, Linden Avenue and Independence Drive. Uh, the apparent low bidder was Milestone Contractors. Um, it did include, the design includes speed humps on Meadow Lane and Highland Place. The motions have been written asking that council approve the contract with the speed humps pending on review. Uh, so council can make a decision whether or not those actually go in prior to the actual construction.
Do we have support?
I'd like to motion to approve Milestone Contractors North, Inc. For a total cost of one million ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and ten cents for the C C M G two thousand twenty-four dash one bid award as recommended by S E H.
I'll second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further comments?
Uh, Mr. President, um, could I direct a question, Miss Abbott, please? Miss Abbott, in the agreement itself, you indicated that we've, we're holding these traffic calming items in, in advance. I, could you point that out to me in the agreement that was that?
I'm looking at, and it looks as though the memo did not get updated with the amended, with the updated motion, which was supposed to read as was um, moved by Counselor Hopper as recommended by S E H, but the installation of speed humps are. As recommended by S E H, with the installation of speed humps or other traffic calming measures being reviewed prior to installation. That updated memo did not make it onto the agenda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to amend the motion to reflect. Um, the comments of Ms. Abbott. Uh, so that we, it was clear that we are holding these traffic calming items subject to further review.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion, we have a second on the amendment. Any further comments? Please call the roll.
Well, I, I guess I'd like just to mention, you know, we've talked about traffic calming, and I think traffic calming. Um. Is not a euphemism for hazards, barriers, obstacles. I think it's trying to create safe roads in the town. And I think we've had a number of residents throughout the last three or four years. Uh, asking for safety measures put together. I think we've had conversations with our police department, our fire department, our public works department, uh, many departments. And, uh, I do think the idea of having traffic calming devices, ways to slow down traffic in neighborhoods is a good thing. Uh, do we need to have metrics? Yes, we do. Uh, and I do applaud the staff for this point getting to, to the point of it's a draft conversation, but I do think. Um, that, yes, I think the chicanes were a little bit expensive. Uh, we'll, we'll talk about it in upcoming, but I do think, um. Uh, speed humps, I think bump ups, a curb that we're seeing at, and on Franlin. Uh, raised crosswalks, especially in some neighborhoods, at, at schools close to parks. I think there are some needed things that are true benefits to the town of Munster, to the residents. So, uh, I wouldn't. I, I don't want to have the discussion about traffic calming, getting back to hazards, barriers, obstacles. I would like it to be framed more about safety for our town, safety for our residents, safety for people in their neighborhoods.
All right, Counselor Gardner. Um. Call for the roll on the amendment. On the amendment.
On the amendment. Counselor Shinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. Then that takes us up to the.
Yes, yes.
We have to vote on the original motion now as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Counselor Shinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. That takes us up to an engagement letter for engineering work.
So we are in the process right now of applying for the next round of C C M G funding. These grants run a very tight timeline. We've identified the roads that we want to include. What you're being asked to approve here is to begin the engineering work on those roads. Uh, which includes Cardinal Drive, Heather Drive, and Oakwood, Oakwood Court and Woodlawn. Uh, in order to have that engineering work done in time, so that the entire project and the funding all fall into place.
We have support.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve engineering services that will engage for the C C M G twenty twenty-four dash two project to include Cardinal Drive. Oakwood Court, Heather Drive, Woodland Avenue in amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Shinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. That takes us up to, uh, engagement letter for employment protection.
So this is to, we're requesting that we engage O D S, which is the company that we're working with on the salary survey to perform, uh. Employees, which for a director of operations. Um, they will. That they focus on Northwest Indiana. Um, and staff believes that this is the best firm to be looking for this particular role.
Do we have support for this?
I'd like to motion. Move to approve proposal from O D S dated July ninth, two thousand twenty-four to perform the search. For the next director of operations at a cost, at a cost not, not to exceed seventy-five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Shinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. All right, that takes us up to, uh, letter of engagement. For debt analysis.
Debt analysis. This is work that we would like to ask Big Attili to perform for the town. Uh, they are currently updating our comprehensive financial plan. This would focus more on the debt component. Um, and looking at where we are now, we know that council is thinking about some other projects. And we want to know what all our options are in terms of other funding options that are available to us, and what's the best way to go about financing various projects.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the engagement letter with Big Attili for a debt analyst at the cost not to exceed fifteen thousand as presented.
I second, I second that.
Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Shinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. That takes us up to a letter with Expletco.
Uh, this is, the town is currently in, has a pending litigation, uh, where there is need to have an expert reconstructionist. To, to look at it and possibly testify for the town. That's what this engagement letter is for.
Mr. President, I would, uh, make a motion to approve the engagement letter with Expletco. Expletco for the expert reconstruction services on a time and next expense basis.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Further comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Counselor Shinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. That takes us up to item M, which is traffic calming on Azalea.
Um, I think we're all aware that this has been a. Largely spoken about, um, issue. Um, there's been many discussions with residents, staff, council, uh, and the speed team. Um, and right now, the recommendation is that the chicanes be removed from Azalea. We got a cost from milestone contractors. Um, for what that would be to put the, to remove them and then to patch the area.
Mr. President, I'm gonna make a, uh, motion authorize milestone contractor in order to remove the chicanes. On Azalea at a cost not to exceed twenty-seven thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars.
I second that.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments?
Yeah, I mean, it was great that, um, S E H Engineering came in to one of our agenda reviews a couple of weeks ago, explaining traffic calming to us and the council and the department heads. Basically stating that Munster never needed chicanes. The one, only thing that works is, uh, speed bumps and, uh, raised crosswalks. And the chicanes, when asked, why were they put in? We were told so. So now we're getting them out for you.
We're about, um, Counselor Shinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes.
Not tomorrow.
I believe the timeframe was somewhere around two weeks.
About two weeks to get it out of the schedule to have the work done.
So. All right, that takes us up to item N, which is disposal of equipment.
So this is a list of the equipment, primarily technology related equipment that the police department is asking to have declared surplus so that they can dispose of it. It's no longer surplus support.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to be third, uh, yeah, the items listed in the memo. Uh, Lieutenant Grohman, a surplus and authorized police department to destroy listed property and remove the same from current inventory.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further comments, questions? Again, these are, this is a, a formal procedure that the town government needs to do to dispose of anything. So, all right, uh. And call for the vote.
Counselor Shinkin?
Yes.
Counselor Hopper?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Peterson?
Yes.
Counselor Nellens?
Yes. All right, do we have any reports?
The only thing I'd like to say is that the, um, event subcommittee and the public awareness subcommittee for the Munster Civic Foundation. Uh, they're both meeting tomorrow night. Four P M will be the event committee, and then five P M, the public awareness committee will be meeting here at the town hall. And unfortunately, the last two Monday nights concerts have been postponed because of, uh, rain, but next Monday, it will be passed it out at Centennial Park.
All right.
Those hands and noodles, right? I think it is. That one is, it's one of the best Motown dancers.
All right, under, uh, portfolio reports.
I do. I have a couple of things. Last week, uh, NERC, they had a project sponsor working group meeting. And the purpose of that meeting was, uh, before their T-Rock meeting, they wanted to determine the status of several projects region wide. And so they wanted to check what the, uh, status of our, our projects as well as others. Our three projects that are at NERC right now awaiting funding, and they wanted to check where we were at, is. Uh, the bike head trail connector, um, that's, oh, the bridges over ditches, and that's scheduled for letting at the, um, end of this year. And so that seems to be moving along. Right on schedule. The reconstruction of Maine from Columbia to Hart. Um, that's a total of a seven million dollar project. And again, I was able to report to them that, you know, we weren't willing to shift any of those funds and were. Ready to move as scheduled. And the final, final item is the signal preemptive devices for the opticon system, which is a multi. Um, city, town, county project that Chief Hayden has been working on. So those are our three big projects. Uh, as far as Munster is concerned, all of our money, funding is going to come as it's scheduled. Um, the second thing I had is that the AIM Medical Trust Board of Directors appointed me to their board, so I'm excited to share that news. And it's a good thing for the town of Munster to be that in, involved and help make decisions about the healthcare, the health insurance that the town carries. And then the last thing I wanted to make everyone aware of is that behind Fire Station Number Three. The Munster, uh, Garden Club and some community volunteers have been working on a community garden. And on Friday, August second, at six P M, they're gonna have a celebration of that garden, and they're gonna do a ribbon cutting. So I'd like to encourage. Those that are in supportive of that type of thing to attend. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
I, I would like to thank, uh, Kirk Treasure Miss and also Fire Chief Hayden for their work in the opticon, um. You know, project that you guys are working on with the grant for NERC. Uh, you guys have taken the leadership role in working with multi jurisdictions and count, uh, cities and towns throughout Northwest Indiana. And I do thank you for your leadership in both, both of your leadership in that, that role. Thanks.
All righty, any other comments? That takes us up to announcements. All town council meetings will begin at seven P M unless otherwise noted. August fifth of twenty twenty-four will be the regular town council meeting and regular redevelopment commission. With that, I'm looking for an adjournment.
I'll make that motion. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
We got a five minute meeting. I'm done.
So we have one more meeting, which is the redevelopment commission. And, uh, oh, John is not here.
No, John. We'll see you then. So. Uh, you ready for the roll?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Shinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Here.
Commissioner Gardner?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Nellens?
Here. We do have an open to the public session here for the redevelopment commission. It has the same, uh, regulations as the, uh. Regular meeting. We'll open the public and there we go.
Right. Mitch Barlowka, nineteen hundred Bluebird Lane. I need to come back here because my last comments were interrupted because I was outed publicly at the last meeting. I took one, made one last comment. I have been to many, many council meetings. I've sat on planning commissions in my life. Never seen an individual resident outed in a meeting like that before. Mr. President, in the future, I ask that you please cut down any personal attacks on anybody outside of the town, employees of the council, elected officials. That is not public policy. Okay? I will also make a comment on the chicanes. Only because what happened in this town was not done correctly. I deal with traffic calming constantly in my job. In fact, to me, traffic calming is the way it should go these days because of distracted driving and everything else. It's hard for me to put a bicycle on a roadway in this, in this environment because of distracted driving, but. I will admit that the way that chicanes came about in this way was not correct, not working with the public, is never a good start. And the actual design of the chicanes, quite honestly, I've never seen that. I've never seen completely concrete chicanes like that. Usually they allow for landscaping. Usually they are attractive. These are nothing like that. So I do thank you for taking the action and supporting the residents on that. And in that regard, you are very responsive and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in the open to the public session for redevelopment? With, uh, close the open to the public, that takes us to the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
If a motion, we have a second. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Commissioner Shinkin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nellens?
Yes. There's no old business, no new business. Any report? No report, announcements. Adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. That concludes our meeting for tonight. Thank you all very much for being here.
Thank you.